I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Reporting in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? And I believe there's one change on it that, well, Josh won't be here.
Oh, yeah.
But regarding the Fire Chief for the dispatch restructuring, but Michael can speak to it, so. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Review the minutes from January 24th, regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any open public comment?
So recently you guys passed the inclusive legislation. I just had a couple of questions about that because it seems rather sweeping in scope as far as like what it requires the town to do for commitment. And so can I just ask a couple of questions? Okay. I read the PDF earlier and this is, this quote is a little, it says, "Distressed by recent catastrophic events unfolding across the country related to human rights, justice, and equality, Bob Harris and Al Weefield needed to do something hands-on, and this is their project." Does anyone know of the recent catastrophic events unfolding across the country that they're talking about that made them both fired up to do this project work?
Well, my understanding of it was just society itself and how things have changed, you know, with inclusivity, racist, you know, racism, diversity and things like that. So I think they've just taken that over time, all of that and the changes that have kind of gone across country, more so in other areas than here. And that's where the focus was at. That's my understanding.
Because I was trying to research white supremacy and all this stuff they're talking about, okay? They're like, basically says, you know, our goal is to understand that we have underlying white supremacy in our majority, white society. And I'm just, I mean, I can't, I can, I can speak for Gentiles. And there is no code amongst us that I know of written in any type of religion that we follow or whatever in any of the white races that we ever claim white. And I can speak for most whites that they were claiming we were, that we're superior to other people. You know, that we might think that we're better at this or better at that, or admit that other people are better at some sports or whatever, you know, different people, different races are better at different things. But I don't know that there's anything that I know other than maybe very, very small fringe groups here or there that are in pockets. There's no doctrine among white people that said we're superior to other people, at least among Gentiles. I just want to know where this is, where the white supremacy is that they're talking about that is...
I mean, I can't answer you because I didn't write this and I didn't, you know, push for this movement. And so, I mean, I think they're the ones that would answer your questions best.
But do you recognize that there is a white supremacy? It says that you're supposed, it says that this document says that you recognize that there is overwhelming white supremacy within our white community in our case.
Well, I...
Okay, so unless I'm mistaken, Michael, what we signed and what we agreed to was just basically upholding every law that's been passed that protects races and other protected status people. Is that correct?
I realize this is an uncomfortable conversation. I'm sorry.
It's not uncomfortable at all. What I'm saying is, is that the preamble has nothing to do with what we put our names to, which is just that we're going to enforce in this town inclusivity, Title IX, all that sort of stuff. Which we always have.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so, but then, but it goes on to say that, okay, to tell the world at large that Vermont welcomes all people to our state from the world. Is that true? We welcome all people from the world?
I believe so. My relatives came from Ireland. They were welcomed here, got jobs.
My relatives are Scandinavian.
Did they throw your relatives out?
What?
Did they throw your relatives out?
Oh, they were, came here because they were being persecuted. They came here for religious freedom.
For a better place.
Yeah. Yeah, but I'm looking at what's happening with the forced immigration, this kind of inclusivity that's happened in Europe and there. And I'm just, I'm just concerned like about what's going on with the Arabs and the Arab gangs there.
We, I don't care to get involved in this. This is a small town in Proctor. We don't set national policy here. You know, we don't plan to.
Well, it says that you're moving to set the policy of the whole state.
We agree with, you know, being good to everybody, being kind. Now, that's what I agreed to.
I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm not trying, I never realized this is like...
This white supremacist thing, I don't agree with at all.
I'm trying to find out...
I don't like it.
Like what?
This white supremacy.
I don't like white supremacy either.
Okay, so we're kind of getting off tangent and we've actually already, we've already signed this out, but we've already signed it. You can say your next question, but then we, to spend time on it when we've already signed it.
I respect you have a, you have a long meeting ahead of you, so I apologize. Okay, so this, this has everything to do with your policies and everything, your written, written policies and everything. So what policies have been changed and have been put into motion since this has passed? Has there been any changes to any policy, written policies?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Oh, I put pronouns on my, on my email.
Okay. But we haven't rewritten any policy?
No, no, no.
No.
Are there plans in place to, to put for, to change policies to have diverse language? You said that we already have in place a fair system and I feel like what we had in place is where everybody's judged equally. But now I feel like everybody's looking at race or sexual identity and making decisions based on that rather than maybe if somebody's qualified or if somebody's, I don't know, it just seems strange to me. I just like, I don't, I don't understand this stuff. And I'm trying to figure out, so if you're changing the manuals, I just want to see like what's going on with the language because I'm very concerned because I see a lot of things going on in other places and it doesn't, I haven't seen anything good come from any, any of this stuff. I'd like to, if there's good stuff coming from it, I'd like to know where it is.
True.
And I would like to just note one question. Who approves literature? Like, so if you change your policies because you want to show that you're committed to this thing you sign onto, it says you're supposed to show your committal through changing your policies.
Well, the manager changes policy and the select board approves it. So if there's policy changes or, you know, if it's internal policy within him and the staff, it's amongst them. If it's something that impacts, you know, the entire town, the select board can review it.
How do you know if you're writing something diverse or not?
Well, I don't think we're, I'm not going to get into the weeds with this because a lot of that was the verbiage.
It's community legislation.
I know, but the verbiage that they put into it is what they wanted and what they heard. We are basically like Ben, you know, said, we just signed it to say, yeah, we will be inclusive and diverse within our community.
And within the extent of the law.
Exactly.
Exactly.
And that was the important change that we made after we had our legal team review it.
Right.
Okay. Okay, I'm just, you know.
We didn't, we did not sign...
I'm not trying, I'm not here to like, cause there's no problems. I'm just really confused. This is like, new to me, I'm trying to find out. Go ahead.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
We didn't sign the original proposed document. All of us felt, well, I shouldn't say that. I felt and that we had laws and layers of laws already in place and that Proctor as a whole is welcoming and inclusive. That we're good neighbors and kind to people that are from somewhere else, considerate of someone else's, oh, I don't know, their religion or their holidays or whatever. And then after a while of batting back and forth, something that we could all agree to was drafted and that's what we signed. So it's, it's all very nice, but it's not as confrontational, I don't feel, as the original document that was handed to us because I don't see a problem in Proctor.
Okay, I just thought it said that by signing that document you signed, you were making a commitment to the rest of the things.
No, we didn't sign that document. We wrote our own. Okay, so that original document that you're reading from and the story behind it, that was theirs and what they had hoped to include and put out there. And we just took a step back and said, it doesn't quite fit our community and tried to come up with something that was a little more gentle in the language. I feel we did that.
Okay, well, if you start changing the manuals and documents and hiring policies, I would like to, I would like to be of first.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Any, nobody's on, right? Oh, there's a couple of people.
Yeah, Christina's asking if it's with the grain group and they're going to be doing that.
Okay, yep, okay. Okay, so Josh Webb is not here. So Michael, do you want to just speak to the dispatch restructuring?
Sure, and I think the long and short of this is that this state is kind of ready to wash their hands of the responsibility of emergency dispatch. There's been no bill introduced, but it is a line item that is proposed in the budget. And that line item is for $11 million and the timeline is the next two to three years. The state hopes to hand that responsibility over to different regions. That's, the feedback I've gotten back from the emergency management community is that is a very fast turnaround. And the other problem is the state hasn't really provided the data that decisions makers need to assess whether 11 million is going to be enough. And then beyond that, what's the cost going to be just to maintain it? So that's, that's where it's at now. There, I had a meeting with VLCT. I also spoke with the Fire Chief about it. VLCT is working with the legislation to make sure that, you know, moving forward, that the emergency management society's voices are heard, that, you know, this is a big step for us and that we shouldn't put 11 million in there to implement, but more or less maybe to plan first. So, so that, you know, that's kind of encompasses the whole brief. If you have any questions about it, yeah, feel free to ask. And if I can't answer it, I can find something out from Josh Webb.
So this is 911?
Correct. And you know, yeah, so what this would, from what I've heard is it's a staffing issue. They just can't keep the, this call center staffed. So, yeah, and our, our fire station uses the state police who uses, you know, Department of Public Safety, DPS. And so I could imagine probably our contract with the, with the county would go up and then, and then who knows from there. Josh did tell me that they're trying to work with Rutland City to maybe set something up there, but we'll see where that goes. I think those talks are very preliminary.
So down the road, it's going to cost us money?
Oh, yeah.
But I think it's going to be a huge improvement. Where 911 right now is, is not local. So when people call 911 and they disperse an ambulance or police officers, they don't even know where they're going because these people have no clue where Church Street is in Rutland or, you know, Park Street is in Proctor, you know? So it might be some improvements. All right, anybody else have questions or comments?
Do they do countywide in Virginia?
Who? The city of Waynesboro had their own, had their own thing and I can't, I think Amherst, I think each county had their own too, so. But they're not easy jobs to fill. It's a stressful job too, you know?
Yeah.
Thanks for putting that belt for me.
No problem, and you can always go to the VLCT website. They do legislation reports. So if you want to go there and see what's, what's happening, this is on there. It's legislation report number six. And I think the latest one is seven. So it's a great resource.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good stuff. So the feedback that we got on the snow removal, people commenting on the good job that the guys did around town.
Fantastic job.
Yeah. I even had somebody in the city today say about, our streets are amazing, like clean and stuff. And I also don't know who put the hearts out here in the park.
That was cute.
Maybe smiled this morning. I was just like, oh, look at the hearts. They're for me. Highway Department.
Bruce, did you want to speak towards the TAC meeting and all that you had last month? Or, sorry to put you on the spot.
No. It's, it was kind of an unusual meeting, but very well thought out by, you know, Devin. The, the big thing is that they have a person at regional planning that is well versed on this ARPA money situation and they also are doing, they have somebody available, the same person and with their staff is to assist with project management, which is a very costly thing, but they will do it at a, I think, a very reasonable cost rather than an end of it, us as Proctor having to almost hire somebody as a project manager. So regional planning will be doing that and the next thing is that they're going to be talking, starting to talk about bridges, which hopefully we're going to be seeing something happening out here with the railroad bridge this week and hoping to be able to really push this bridge and get it on the schedule for replacement. And it may be after they're, they're here this week, they'll realize that it is a serious, in a serious condition and hopefully be able to maybe move it up on the schedule somehow. But we have a regular, it was on the schedule to be looked at in June, but maybe this crew that will be out this week will be able to do that analysis and we'll get a, an up-to-date report. We haven't had one in about three years on this bridge here, so. Anything else that you can think of, Michael, what?
Bruce, I think that summed it up pretty well. And a lot of those projects that they're talking about managing would, I think, would be smaller scale like scoping studies.
Yeah.
Instead of something really large, which needed, you know, engineering review.
Thank you. Class two highway grant?
Yeah, so it's, it's almost time that we start submitting the class two highway grant. I just kind of wanted to give you an idea of what the town had planned. If the funds do present themselves to us, then, then we'll mill and pave one mile of West Street starting from, from the edge of town. Grants can't be submitted until after town meeting. So the estimated cost with 5% contingency of that one mile is about $230,000, with the town matching with $23,000. And that grant maxes out at $200,000. So, and I got those numbers assuming that asphalt is $75 a ton with that 5% contingency. I think John Corliss wanted to do a little bit more because West Street, you've got a section, a mile that's bad and then it gets pretty good and then it gets bad again for, for, for almost like a little over half a mile. But we did the numbers and I think the cost would, is a little bit higher than we budgeted for to knock out the whole thing. So we would hope, you know, if we're only going to spend $23,000, match $23,000, we, I think we've got like $80,000 in the budget. So we could probably clean up some other areas or extend it a little bit longer if we had to.
Because they haven't given that grant out in, I believe, two years now with the...
Plus, yeah.
Yeah, so hopefully we'll be near the top of the list.
Yeah, I hope so. I, I asked Brian Sanderson and tried to nudge him a little bit to see, you know, what the possibility of us getting it was. And he thought that we had a pretty high chance last year. So I'm kind of on the same page as you, Bruce. I'm thinking this year might be us, which would be great because that road's pretty rough.
Yep.
Railroad bridge. Bruce kind of touched on that too.
Yeah, yeah, Bruce, you touched on it. The, the Main Street Railroad Bridge has seen better days. So Cliff was walking past there, taking pictures and saw that one of the rails, one of the bigger supports had, it was ready to come off. And the fear, the fear was that somebody would lean over on it and it would just go. So John and I jumped on it, put the cones up. So I don't think anybody can get down. The state came Friday and looked, they did look at it.
Yeah.
And John said that they were going back to have a pow-wow to figure out how to fix it because I don't think they're just going to be able to, you know, make an isolated fix. They're going to have to do a whole rail. So, but hopefully they're having bigger conversations than that. That would be really great. So I don't like to push too, too hard. I'll, you know, I'll give it till end of day Tuesday, end of day Wednesday. If I don't hear something, I'll, I'll get back on it. That's all I got for the railroad. That's all I got for the bridge.
South Street Sidewalk, she is next.
Okay, I'm gonna... Jenny, Christina, are you all ready or should we wait till 6:30?
I think we're ready, but when I started to make public dinner since it was noticed for 6:30, we wait just a couple of minutes.
Sure.
I don't think anybody's going to...
Oh, you can, you know, get started in a couple of minutes and then just make sure...
But we can do the Board of Water Commissioners if you want and then go jump back out. Want to?
Yeah.
Is there a motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners?
Motion.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor? The operations and maintenance manual update?
Yeah, so I'm going to wrap both of these line items into one. We've got the operations and maintenance manual update and the sanitary survey response letter. And in your packet, I believe, I've included the sanitary survey response that I gave back to the state. Really, the, the meat and potatoes of this was deadlines. So I just wanted to set clear realistic expectations with the state on how we'd be able to get this stuff done. The town's working with DMK to update the O&M manual. We're having Lincoln Applied Geology to update the source protection plan. And John is currently replacing a backflow preventer on the treatment plant, which was one of the things that were called out. And once we, once we get all that taken care of, we should be back in the green.
Thank you. Is there a motion to go out of Water Commissioners and into the Board of Sewerage Commissioners?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Will Street Sewer Update?
So Gary Cupper had to take over managing the deeds. He had his, he had one of his guys working here doing title work last week. Went, the guy was from Lynchburg, where I went to school from, so.
Oh.
Yeah. So we talked for a bit and, but not too long because, you know. Yeah. And, and that, that was kind of the last step that we had to, aside from working on the railroad permit and then they're coming out, the state's coming out to look at the wetland, but is still confident that we're going to be able to move forward. We, we get that, we get this last form done saying that we've got the right to go through there, which we don't see any issues with at this time. A&E is talking about going out to bid in like a month.
Agreed.
The only concern they have is materials. Just supply is, the supply chain is so messed up right now. But I, I think they're just kind of, they're just letting us know ahead of time that that has been an issue with other projects, but we'll see how it goes.
All right, is there a motion to go out of the Board of Sewerage and back to the regular select board meeting?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're ready for South Street Sidewalk.
Well, we can at least set it up. Christina, do you, do you all have the ability to share your slideshow presentation or do I need to share it?
I think you're going to need to because I just clicked on it and it said that it's disabled.
Yeah, I can do it. I practiced before we started, so. Oh, wait, did I do it?
Was there?
I know, but I, I think it would just actually have to do a thing here. All right, so Christina, I've got it pulled up. Can you see it?
Um...
No.
I, I can't see yours, but I, I have my own, so.
Oh, so just let me know. I can, if you want me to skip slides or go through slides, I can go through slides. I'm on the main screen here, the South Street Sidewalk.
Okay, you can go to the second slide and...
10-4.
And we can jump right in. So the project area is along South Street from Grove Street to the north side of the church, along the west side of the road. This project was identified through a bicycle and pedestrian scoping study that was completed in 2017. The project includes replacement of the existing sidewalk on the west side of the road with a new five-foot wide concrete sidewalk separated from the road by the eight-five-foot wide grass end zone. The purpose of today's meeting is to present our conceptual plans, which have been revised for the V-Trans conceptual review comments and to solicit community feedback on the plans. So on this slide, you can see on the very left side is Grove Street. And those two yellow dashed lines there are the existing crosswalks. And then on the right side of the slide is the intersection with Reynolds Street. And you can see there's another existing crosswalk there as well. So the new sidewalk in this segment will closely follow the existing sidewalk alignment. However, the width will be increased to the state standard of five feet. The sidewalk construction along this segment of the project will be performed within the existing state right of way. As the project area is mostly flat, there are no major grading impacts and the new sidewalk will closely match the elevation of the existing sidewalk. There are some large trees along the project area. These existing trees will require tree protection during construction, which means the contractor will have to put up some barriers around the trees and be cautious looking around them. Each driveway will have a concrete sidewalk installed across it and the pavement between the road and the sidewalk will be replaced. This will require that driveways will be closed to traffic for a period of three to five days. However, this would be scheduled with each affected property owner individually in advance to coordinate a different parking place for them. And that is just within the purpose of concrete curing across the sidewalk. If there is a situation where a property owner absolutely has the rest of the park and must access their driveway, there are options that we can provide in the, in the bid documents to require... to require plating over the concrete while it cures to allow access. We go to the next slide. So the next slide is the northern half of the project area. You can see Reynolds Street on the left side of the slide, and then on the right side of the slide is the very north end of the project area, the northern driveway to the Again, here, the new sidewalk will closely follow the existing alignment. However, again, width will be increased to five feet. The new sidewalk will again closely match the existing sidewalk elevation. Existing trees also will require tree protection here. And same same situation with the driveway crossings. The concrete would need three to five days cure, and so either plating or coordination to park elsewhere could be done. The major difference in this section of the project is that the construction work will require temporary easements. This is required because the sidewalk is much closer to the right-of-way here. The driveway kind of comes in a little bit in this area as we move north. It comes in closer to the edge of the road pavement, so we don't have as much space behind the sidewalk to work. So the the temporary easements are only for the duration of construction and are limited to, I don't know if you can see it, but there's a green line on the plan is above where the sidewalk is. The sidewalk is shown in blue, and then there's a green green dashed line above that. That would be the limit of construction. And so the the existing driveway is pretty much right at the back of the sidewalk, so there are no no permanent easements required, but the temporary would be the green line. So that would be to allow space for excavator tracks and tools and equipment and personnel to be located behind the existing sidewalk during construction. Any surface in this area that's disturbed during construction would be returned to its pre-project conditions or better after the sidewalk construction is complete. We can go to the next slide. This is our cost estimate. The original, the preliminary estimate that we prepared when assisting the town with applying for this grant was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the total project cost, so we are right in line with that. Estimated construction cost is one hundred thirty-eight thousand, which does include a fifteen percent contingency. And then the project also requires final design, which is the phase we're in right now, construction phase, engineering, and local project management. And so all of that combined is what is covered under your grant amount, and that comes to one hundred ninety-nine thousand. So this project is funded through a Vtrans grant. It covers eighty percent of the project cost. The town is awarded a grant of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, but requires forty thousand dollars local match. We go to the next slide. This is the schedule. So the Vtrans grant does require a specific design process to be followed. The concept plan was submitted to Vtrans in December along with all of our the environmental information. So this started the process of the environmental review, which can take six months to a year to complete. The project cannot proceed until the environmental review is completed, so right now we are on hold waiting for that. The next step after environmental review is cleared is the preliminary plan supplemental, so we expect that in December of two thousand twenty-two, and that is based on approximately one year for the review. To this date, and actually the whole schedule will be adjusted based on the completion of the environmental review, so if it if it's completed earlier, then all of these dates will move up. So after the preliminary supplemental is reviewed by Vtrans, we move on to the right-of-way phase. We estimate about six months to complete that. That does take some back and forth with Vtrans to review, draft the way, and then with property owners to sign easements. Again, this is another phase that could be shorter or longer, depending on how long it takes to get easements signed. The eighty-five percent design will be after that, so we have that scheduled for July of two thousand twenty-three, and then a hundred percent design in early fall of twenty-three. Once a hundred percent design is reviewed and approved by Vtrans, the project can be authorized to bid, and we anticipate bidding to occur over the winter twenty-three to twenty-four with construction in spring of twenty-four. And then at the progress of the environmental review and the right-of-way, could change this to move up to fall of twenty-three or later to summer of twenty-four. And that was that was all I had. This is a pretty simple project, so I'd like to open it up, and if anybody has any questions, we can certainly go back to the plan view and.
Does anybody have any questions?
Thanks, project.
Thank you.
Yes.
Don't think anyone has questions.
Christina, in the archaeological review from Harken, there was it seemed like there was the potential that Vtrans might require a little bit of additional archaeological work. Can you explain that a little bit in case something comes up with Vtrans that like adds to more time for that to come in? Sure, so we had Harken do a review of the entire project area, and basically they came back with as long as the new sidewalk construction is not occurring outside of the existing back of sidewalk, that there would be no historic archaeological impacts. In the there's a few areas where we're slightly behind the existing sidewalks, or slightly further to the west of the existing sidewalk. We did follow up with Harken on that, and they thought it would be okay because we are in very close proximity to the edge of the existing sidewalk, but it will it does depend on what Vtrans says. So Vtrans is going to take their own look at it and make their own determination. They will factor in Harken's report, so that could require a little bit additional investigation. It's called a Phase One B, and what that what that consists of is having Harken come in and do small, they do like little small shovel test pits to look for any artifacts. And if they don't find anything, then everything's cleared and there's no archaeological impact. We did have to do this recently on another project, and they did not find anything there. And it does it is actually outside of the scope of work for this project, so it would be an additional cost, but generally it's the area is pretty small here, so I would expect it to cost more than probably fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars if needed.
Thank you. Still no questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Christina.
Thank you.
Maybe they can give us a timeline in terms of the other engineers. Do you have anything else to add before we move on?
No, that was I think that covered everything. Unless there's any questions.
I think we're good. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
You, too.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the manager's report. Town report update.
Town reports in the mail. That's all I've got to add. It was quite an experience, and I've left room for improvement next year, but overall I think it, you know, they don't look bad, so.
I think it turned out great.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. And I'll just kind of move along like I normally do if anybody has questions.
Sure.
Sure, okay. Local hazard gate local hazard mitigation plan meeting. The town has one more LHMP meeting to wrap things up, followed by public comment dates that will be announced at our next meeting. The Beaver Pond Ice Fishing Event, depending on whether the Beaver Pond Committee is hosting their first family ice fishing event. The event is from eleven to one P. M. on February twenty-six, and auger will be available, some bait, I'd suggest bringing your own bait, and a raffle will be drawn at one P. So spread the word. Think it's supposed to get warm this week, huh? Do you think it'll mess with it, Tom, or not?
I think we've got enough ice up there.
Oh, okay.
We need a tester, though, Michael.
Yeah, right.
You'll be surprised how soft the ice is when people go out there.
Oh, my gosh.
It's not very even.
All right. We do have forms for people to fill out, so they're online.
At least so us are after.
Fifty-two Main Street redevelopment update. So I met with with Zion growers, who are the potential buyers over here at at the old Vermont Marble Company building, and Cedar was on that call and also a representative from VCDP, which is the Vermont Community Development Planning Grant, which is a part of like an offset of CBBG, which is a community development block grant, which is just kind of larger in scope. But the big thing is Zion growers would like to partner with the town to perform an architectural plan of fifty-two Main Street. Zion growers pretty much needs this architectural plan to, you know, to go to the bank, just to kind of get things rolling. If things move forward, what that would look like is, you know, the board would approve it, Zion growers would have to would have to come here again and and present their their offer, and then the town would act as the grantee and Zion growers would be the sub-grantee. So we would kind of act as the middleman. They would spend the money, the receipts would come to me, I'd forward them on to the state, and that's kind of how it would work. The max for that is sixty thousand, and there's a ten percent match, so Zion would have to match, you know, would have to pay ten percent of those costs. And more to come on that in the next few weeks because after our conversation, Zion growers did realize there was a lot of red tape involved in this. So if if anybody has any questions about that, I can I can try to answer them.
Yeah, it's similar to what we did with the Marble Museum and the Preservation Trust, I believe.
A few years ago, yes. Yeah, except that was this is a small grant.
Small, yeah. And and also, part of that conversation was this grant has to support LMI or low-middle-income, the LMI community. So they would, in order to qualify for this, Zion growers would have to fifty-one percent of their labor force would have to qualify as low to middle income, which, you know, the work that they're doing would would probably suit someone like that pretty well. Yeah.
What's the definition of a low-income worker? Do you have a like salary range or something like that?
You know, it's it's different because in Virginia, if you did a community development block grant, areas were delineated into low LMI areas. So if you were going to do a project, it had to be in an LMI LMI delineated spot on the map, but it's not like that here in Vermont. So, you know, I'm not I'm not sure what it is, but it's probably just under X amount of dollars a year.
I have a strange question. It's a processing facility that they're going to make, right?
Yeah, so they would turn the hemp plant into a a thread to be used for for bedding or construction material.
Right, so why are they called Zion growers if they're like Zion processors?
Oh.
They're called the Zion growers. I was just like.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I know me, I know they do work with farmers and stuff, so, yeah.
Yeah, because they have other businesses, right?
I I think they're, yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bear out of bear.
I don't think they ever intend to fill that whole space. I don't want to speak for them, but what I've gotten from them is that is a they've been speaking with the hems, you know, the goal is to get the whole thing, and there's there's just no way that at this point they see Zion growers would encompass the whole facility, so they would lease it out to other light industrial businesses.
Which would be good for Patrick.
Oh, yes. Anything that'll get some.
And diversify, yes.
Yes. Anyway, but but like I said, there's a lot of there's a lot of hoops they have to jump through to get those loans. One really cool thing is, well, it's a grant, but there's also a development loan that that Patrick with the state was telling us, who was talking about the VCDP grant. What was really neat about this is the max for this loan was a million, and at its maturity, after it was all paid off, if it were if it were a one-million-dollar loan, the town would get half of that and could treat it as its own revolving loan fund, which would be pretty cool. We haven't got that far yet, you know, we're still at the sixty thousand VCDP, but we'll see how it progresses.
I have, Tom, you just said, and with diversify, I'm just, can you explain what you mean by that comment? I'm just not really familiar with this.
Well, they're going to do hemp, and that, you know, they want to rent space to other small industries.
You mean diversify in the meaning of just different having different businesses?
Right, right. I mean, if hemp went bad for some reason, hopefully the the little shop next door would stay in business because he made signs or whatever. You know, we were we were too heavily locked in marble and not diversified years ago, and now we pay the price.
All right, so the State Emergency Operations Center is still partially activated. The objectives right now of the EOC of the CO S EOC is to distribute mass to general to public in appropriate sectors and continue to provide support to healthcare systems. Trends predict cases will continue to decrease. I'm talking about Omicron here or COVID in general. However, January, according to the VDH website, tied for the second deadliest month of the pandemic in Vermont with sixty-two fatalities. So we're moving forward with the Stormwater Master Plan. Stephanie Burke with with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, who does a lot of our emergency management stuff, was glad to hear that we're working on a Stormwater Master Plan because plans like these do help mitigate flood disasters, among other things. Mortimer Proctor presentations, this is an important one. Word is that Mortimer Proctor applications will be most likely presented in March. I'll stay in touch with applicants as the data approaches. So Lisa, that'll be you and probably Megan and, oh, Ariad, you might be there, too.
Beaver Pond.
Beaver Pond, yeah.
That's a little later than usual, isn't it, Lisa?
Yeah, generally it's during Edward break, but that was what he said when I dropped the call.
I'll keep everybody up to speed on it. I'm sure some I'm sure people will hear before I do, though.
They'll call everyone if your number's on the.
Oh, okay. All right, applications for future and returning committee members. Please see the website for those interested in applying for a seat on one of the town's committees. Important to note, the town needs to appoint a new tree warden, and Dick Warner is officially resigning from the planning commission. So I also printed a few hard copies of the applications over on the on the recorder's desk if someone would like to pick them up. We're looking for Parks and Rec committee members, and we're going to have to fill the planning commission seat. VOREC, which is the Virginia Outdoor Recreation.
Vermont.
Oh, God. The Vermont, well, anyway, yeah, so if you want to be on the VOREC committee, you can be on the VOREC committee. If you want to know more about it, you can call me. And then we had a reported animal control ordinance violation this week, but a citizen -- But a citizen reported an animal at large, no evidence was provided. So the person the claim was made against was sent a letter to encourage they maintain proper control over their animal and they were provided a copy of the town's ordinance. And Madam Chair, I believe that concludes my manager's report.
All right, thank you very much.
Michael, can you tell me who's joined in the top corner here?
Oh. Oh, it's Angelo.
Okay, so discussion and action items. Everybody got the bills?
Yep.
Yes.
Questions, Almas? Okay, Sheriff's Report.
Wave to him on the way here. Wave to him on the way here.
I don't know who's going eighty miles an hour on the heat of practice. Are you coming?
No, one may. Dear Krista, maybe.
Parks and Recreation bylaws. Now, when was this drafted?
Oh, maybe two weeks ago.
Okay, so this is brand-new, so.
I put those together because I did not see any.
Anything beforehand?
No. I saw a paragraph that was written in two thousand thirteen about generally what the Parks and Rec Committee did. And that was about it. And it was hidden pretty deep.
I feel like it's so deep.
Oh, that?
Yeah, like, there's so much, um, it just seems very strict.
Very formal?
Yeah, and also, I think there's no bylaws for Beaver Pond Committee?
I don't believe so.
Correct. So I didn't know if we should make it more generic as just bylaws for Proctor.
Standing committees. Standing committees.
Yeah. Try to have the same guidelines or, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't see a problem with that.
Did you say we, there was a possibility of a looser organization type? Beaver Pond, we don't meet all the time, we don't.
Well, yeah, I think that's a conversation worth having eventually. What, what we would like to treat Beaver Pond Committee as, you know, as a Beaver Pond group or as a Beaver Pond Committee, you know, how much work is being delegated to them from the board and how much are they being obligated to report back to the board would be the big question. So, and I think that was the thought of creating this specific Parks and Recreation, because I didn't know if we were going to have that many committees moving forward, but that was an assumption on my part. But the committee shall prepare and submit to review the town manager's select board. Yeah, I think this could be made to be generic, to fit standing committees, for sure. If that's what the, if that's what the board were like, I'll revisit it and.
Sounds like a good idea.
Turn it down a little bit, or what?
Okay. Does anybody else have any?
No, I think it'd be nice to have a kind of a generic one that could make it.
Like a blanket?
Yeah.
For all committees? That were kind of more governed by just the bylaws instead of, like, Parks and Rec governing committee? Good job, Michael.
Oh, thanks. Well, I got the ball rolling anyway.
Yes, you did. Thank you.
Parks and Recreation, that is without a doubt our biggest committee. And with, just something to think about, with the rink going more year-round now, we almost need to think about a recreation director for, part-time recreation director for the summer or something.
To cover both, the, both the rink and pool, you mean?
Recreation, yes, parks, yep. Yeah, I mean, we need to hire guards, we need to hire ice makers, we need to hire this, that, the other thing, lawn mowers.
But if we had a, somebody for the pool, they manage all that piece of it from that position and then?
Does the rink want to be managed by the pool?
No, I'm not saying they would be managed by the pool, I'm just saying the, the rink manages the rink, the pool manages the pool.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, that's where it's always been, right?
Yes, it always has been, yes. With the rink going year-round now and recreation is certainly getting bigger, bigger part of people's lives.
I feel like it'd be hard to find that person.
Well, I was thinking it might be a good job for, you know, a college kid, sort of the summer or something. I just hate to tie up a lot of Michael's time with stuff. Something to think about.
Is Beaver Pond considered part of Parks and Recreation?
I mean, I, I feel like it's a separate entity.
I explored that when I was writing the, the Parks and Rec bylaws. Who would be responsible for what? And I think the Beaver Pond Committee kind of oversees Beaver Pond. And Public Works maintains kind of all of it anyway. So it all falls under the umbrella of Public Works.
Yeah, because I don't think it was created, like, under Parks and Rec.
No, but what I mean is if all the entities are separate, then Beaver Pond stands by itself and manages itself.
Yeah.
And the pool does and the rink does. But if you have, like, a general manager for Parks and Recreation, would Beaver Pond then be included as part of that? And what about Main Street Park? Does that become?
I think if you had a, if you had a, like what Tom was saying, if you had a part, if you had a part-time or a full-time Parks and Rec director, then it would make sense for all of those to fall into one because the Parks and Rec Department would be in charge of all the facilities.
Just to oversee it.
Yeah, I just don't know if we're there yet.
No.
And it's because of a tight budget.
Well, and because you have volunteers that are doing the work, so why would you want to squash those people, I guess?
Doing what work?
Well, like, you have Beaver Pond Committee overseeing the pond. You have people doing things and having activities in the park. And when you read these bylaws, they're not, it gives the impression that Park and Rec would be responsible for every park. So if you say that's a park, there's a park at Beaver Pond, because there's not much specificity in these, it gives the impression that Park and Rec would then oversee those.
And I think they, I don't know, the way it's been, it just seems nice that they're all kind of, yeah, separated. You know, because some people have a real vested interest in Beaver Pond and just Beaver Pond.
Just Beaver Pond, yeah. I think that would be one of the obligations of a Parks and Rec director is to run a good volunteer program. That's what a good Parks and Rec director.
Well, yeah, yeah.
But, but yeah, I mean, hey, if it's not fixed, if it's not broke, don't fix it, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Just looking at the broad picture, I think.
Well, if, I like that you said that Public Works is basically responsible. I mean, volunteers are lovely and help, but if Public Works is also part of their duties is to maintain the areas, you know, then I'm happy with that. That's, that's good, because.
Your question or comment?
Just wanted to comment, as long as the volunteers are doing such a fantastic job, please just leave it. I mean, I know we have the best government probably in the state right here, in Brooklyn, but I still think that the less government, it's, it's just things get so bogged down and complicated and more expensive when we start doing our natural. And it's just like, I really like the fact that we have very active people in the community doing what they're doing.
Yeah.
It's awesome.
I agree, yeah.
I agree, the more community involvement and interaction we can get, I support. Just organizing it is the important part.
Right. Okay, so we'll kind of take a look at those and.
Sure, and maybe we can talk about Beaver Pond Committee if, if you're interested at the next select board meeting or. I don't want to designate work.
Sure, yeah, we could ask the chairman to stop, but.
Yeah, because I think they might have a meeting before, when's their next, when's their next official meeting, do you mean that? Okay, because it might be good for them to kind of have a say in it, too, what they would like.
Maybe before the fishing derby they'd have.
Yeah.
Don't they need the first, first part of the month?
Usually, yeah.
Yes, they probably already did their meeting.
Fishing derby, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Or figure it out.
Okay. ARPA Fund Availability.
Oh, so, yeah, I spoke to that representative, the R R P C that, that Bruce was talking about in the tax report, Adam, I believe his name is. And he's the.
Eric, Eric.
Eric, okay.
Eric Hall.
And he's the ARPA expert. And I've included in your packets the final decision for the treasurers. And, and he's going to give us more information as it comes to him over the, over the coming weeks. But the important part is, it looks like the money has been freed up to spend on more things than just sewer, water, and broadband. And with that knowledge, it might be important for us to revisit, what does Proctor need, what does Proctor want? And decide what we want to do with, with the money we've gotten. So we've gotten half of it now and then we'll get another half later.
You know what we got for this half?
I want to say it was, ooh.
Wasn't the total, like, one?
I want to say it was one-eighty.
One-eighty for the total or for this half?
For this half. But I can report back at our next meeting.
We'll take it.
Yeah.
They definitely loosened up.
For sure. There was a big complicated equation you had to do and all that. And, yeah, the only, if, the only, I don't know if this is true or not, but it's what I heard, that the only municipality in Vermont that didn't qualify for this variance, I guess you'd call it, was Burlington. Because it's under, like, ten million. If you, if you received less than ten million, then you qualified for being a little more liberal.
It wasn't Trent's, and then it drew, like, everybody else. It went directly to them, I believe.
Yeah, so we would, you know, we seriously probably want to have some kind of work session or, you know, get some community involvement, volunteer involvement, you know, and find out what we want to do.
There's also, I think, in the new one, or the final one, where you can actually use it to offset other federal funding to make a match, and you couldn't do that before.
Yeah, they were saying you can match it as well.
So that's huge.
Mm-hmm. Still don't think you can pay off any loans with it or anything. I don't think you can pay off any bonds with it.
Is it, if you were talking with Eric, just might throw up the idea of, of our lagoons down here, whether there's a way to spread it out a little bit because we don't know what the cost of that is going to be and whether you could set aside X dollars.
I don't think you can put it in reserve. Yeah.
That's what I had heard at the start of it, you almost had to have a project ready to go.
Yeah.
And whether they've loosened it up to have something like that.
So it's like, if you have a big project, you don't have to do it this year because you got the funding. You can have it out there as long as you've contracted for it and then pay for it when it costs. But that is definitely a good one, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, so contracts and letters, facility use agreements for the skating rink. There was one from Otter Valley and one from Proctor High School.
Is Perkins Rick's aware of these? Yeah, she's the one, Megan is usually the one who forwards them to me. So she works with them before they come through.
I had a question on those. Do they provide an insurance policy for their event?
The school's policy is on file downstairs.
Oh, okay.
They give a new policy every year until you have it on file.
Well, it's a good question, Linda, because if they, if it's not the school, then they can qualify. We have a tulip.
Right, well, I knew that, but I didn't see it listed on this.
There should be a copy with the.
But Otter Valley, just, did we get one from Otter Valley for a certificate of insurance?
Are they not, do they not fall under the same?
Well.
No, that's a different district.
Ours, like.
Okay.
They're up in northeast.
I'll, I'll talk to them about tulip then.
Certificate of insurance.
Yeah, I, we can get it done because we've got time, I think. Well, it really only takes.
Well, one of these is the eighteen.
Yeah, they can, because I'm sure they have it, they might have it for them. But they can just send it over to you.
The one for Proctor High School is Friday.
Okay.
So we need to approve that.
So is there a motion to approve the facility use agreement for Proctor High School?
So.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we can also, if you want to make a motion to approve Otter Valley contingent on getting insurance.
So I have a receipt for the insurance, so.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Geographical mapping contract.
Yeah, this is just an annual contract that's signed every year. Well, I'm not sure if it's been signed every year. Celia was a little confused about it, but.
On County, isn't that the next one on the?
Oh, yeah, you put the check mark in the wrong place. Sorry about that. Letter of rec, oh, rewind. Letter of recommendation. For Rutland County Solid Waste District.
Won't go through.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the mapping. Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing this before, yeah.
It's a service they've been providing, so it, you know, it's kind of like when I showed up and we didn't continue the fuel with Champlain, they just kind of keep it going until you tell them to stop, kind of thing, so.
But Celia, so she knows, she's aware of it, but just, okay.
Because that comes out of our general bond. It's come out of the listers.
Yeah.
Yep.
As long as it's budgeted.
Yeah.
So we don't need a motion? All right, is there anything else? There's a, we can go into executive session. Is there anything else in the regular meeting?
I will ask a quick question, which I could probably find out, but since there's a lot of people here, I'll just ask now. So for the insurance, if it were the, the, which one did we not approve contingent?
Otter Valley.
Otter Valley is a separate school district.
Oh, but if it was the unified union, the Corey Valley Unified Union, it would be.
Urban.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
They should supply a copy of that form, though, with the.
Don't you think that there's?
Celia has it downstairs.
He's talking about, he's talking about, are any issues?
No, but Tom was saying every time the school approves something, that it should be attached.
I agree.
But Celia said before, because she has it on file, and it's, there's one sent here every year.
But the board doesn't know that.
I think that when they fill out these facility use agreements, they should at least note it that it's on file in the office. Something, because it's the first place I go to.
It wouldn't take much for me to put a tick box or something on there, so. Maybe I'll do that.
Does anybody have any questions, comments before we? Yeah, there's a motion to go into executive session to enter into, under the provision of Title One, Section three-one-three A-one-B of the Vermont. to enter into, under the provision of Title I, Section 313A1B of the Vermont statutes. Is there more than, like?
Or to go into.
Executive session. Okay.
Is there a motion?
Aye.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.